Hi, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, September 14th. I'd like to ask Commissioner McCann if he'd lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, if you could do a roll call this evening?
Please let the record show that all Commissioners are present except Commissioner Murphy, who is absent, and Deputy City Attorney Jennifer Farrell is joining us via teleconference.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening for any item that is not on our agenda?
No, we do not.
I apologize. So if we could look at the meeting minutes from our meeting of August 24th?
Recommend approval of the minutes.
I'll second that.
Right, if we could vote? Okay, those minutes are approved. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. We have no items on this evening's consent calendar. So move on to public hearing, item number two, a major antenna use permit request to allow light standard right-of-way installations of commercial wireless telecommunications antennas on San Diego gas and electric utility poles located within 100 feet of residential property lines at 27093 CS Caia Real and 34113 CS Camino El Molino. Do we have a staff report this evening?
Yes, we do. Associate Planner Dani Giometti will be providing a staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Opal, fellow Commissioners. Tonight's topic covers the light standard right-of-way installation of two commercial wireless telecommunications antenna facilities located on separate San Diego gas and electric utility poles, each located within 100 feet of residential property lines. The city originally scheduled these applications to be presented at the July 13th, 2020 Planning Commission hearing, but due to unforeseen circumstances, Verizon Wireless withdrew both applications prior to the hearing. On July 29th, 2020, the applicant requested to reinstate both applications. So both sites are located in Capo Beach. The first site is located along Caia Real. This site contains an existing 24-foot, 10-inch STGE wood utility pole that is located within the city's right-of-way, and that's northeast of the intersection of Caia Real and Camino El Molino. Camino El Molino. The second site is located along Camino El Molino and is an existing 34-foot, 2-inch STGE wood combination utility light pole, and that's located within the city's right-of-way, southwest of the intersection of Via California and Camino El Molino. So these are close-up images of both of the locations. Both sites are located within the city's right-of-way, and they're also zoned in the Transportation Corridor District, TC, on the city zoning map. Both poles are located within close proximity to residential, other utility poles, sidewalks, and streets. The existing utility pole located along Caia Real on the left-hand side here is proposed to be replaced with a new pole, and the utility pole located on Camino El Molino here is proposed to be retrofitted to have the antenna attached to the pole. Pursuant to the antenna section of the Dana Point zoning code, the installation of the commercial light standard right-of-way antennas located within 100 feet of residential property lines is permitted subject to the approval of a major antenna use permit. So these are the proposed simulations of both sites, with obviously I've circled the antennas in the red here. The following slides are going to provide the installation details for each pole in more detail. So this is your Caia Real site. The existing views are going to be on the south, I'm sorry, on the left side here with the, I'm sorry, on the top, and then the proposed sites are going to be, the proposed designs are going to be on the bottom here. So for this particular site, they're going to be demolishing this existing 24-foot high pole, and they're going to replace it with a new 34-foot tall wood utility pole, which will support an attached canister-type antenna and one remote radio unit. So the canister antenna is located here, and then the remote radio unit is going to be down here. The canister antenna is proposed to be mounted on a six-foot wide extension arm, shown here, and that's going to be located at 22 and a half feet above grade. The radio unit and power supply are proposed to be mounted within a shroud on the pole, 12 feet above the grade, and additional equipment will be vaulted underground. So this is the additional equipment, and, I'm sorry, the power supply and the radio, and then the other equipment will be mounted underground. So this results in a new pole which will accommodate the antenna while also conforming to the Transportation Corridor zoning district height limit of 34 feet, as well as conforming to all required location and design criteria that's set forth in the zoning code. So this is the second site on Camino El Molino. So this particular site, they're proposing to utilize the existing pole that's out there. Again, existing is on top, proposed is on the bottom here. So they're going to be installing a light standard right-of-way canister, I'm sorry, a canister-style commercial antenna and one remote radio unit shroud on top of the existing pole. So in this particular one, it's going to be mounted on top of the pole. As you can see here, here's the simulation, it's going to be on top of the pole. The equipment on this one is all proposed to be mounted underground or vaulted underground, and the antenna and equipment on both sites is going to be painted dark brown to match the color of the pole. This one results in a retrofitted pole which will accommodate the antenna while also conforming to the TC zone height limit of 35 feet, Transportation Corridor zone of height limit of 35 feet, and it will also be conforming to the location and design criteria set forth in the zoning code. So the applicants provided a radio frequency certificate of compliance, which has been provided and reviewed, that the proposed facilities will comply with all Federal Communication Commission, FCC, standards for public and radio frequency exposure. And in addition, the submitted coverage maps, which are shown here for Caia Real, they verify that the placement of the new commercial antenna would improve Verizon Cellular service for both public and private users within Capo Beach. Obviously, this is the before, and then this is the after here. And then this is the Camino El Molino site, obviously showing the before and the after coverage. So both proposed projects satisfy all location and design criteria required for light standard right-of-way antenna installation as outlined in the Dana Point zoning code. Based on the subject analysis, staff has determined that the projects are consistent with the policies and provisions of the City of Dana Point, the general plan, and the Dana Point zoning code. Findings supporting approval of the requested antenna use permits are articulated in the attached draft resolutions, and therefore, staff recommends approval of AUP 20-001 and AUP 20-002, subject to the conditions contained in the attached draft resolution. This concludes my presentation. If, sorry, this concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Chair Opal, can I add something? We did receive several correspondences related to health concerns related to this application. So Dani and perhaps Jennifer can perhaps provide some insight as to the city's ability to address that aspect of this application.
That's correct. So the city cannot regulate the installation of commercial antennas based on the possible health and safety risks from radio frequencies. That's set forth by the FCC and the government, which regulates the radio frequencies. The city does have the ability and can regulate the location and design criteria, and as long as they are located in a location that is set forth by the zoning code, and it meets the design criteria outlined, and we can make the findings for it, then we recommend for approval for these types of installations.
Jennifer, do you have anything to add to that?
You know, the only thing that I would add is that this is required, you need the federal radio frequency guidelines, and we have done that here tonight. So that would be the only thing that I would add.
All right, thank you. Do I have any questions to the Commissioners to staff? Okay, Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. Thank you, Dani. In the correspondence that the city received, a lot of them were talking about the equipment being 5G. Is that accurate?
That would probably be a question better for the applicant, but verbally, I've been informed that the equipment is actually 4G.
Okay. Did you say the applicant's not available?
The applicant is present.
Okay, so if they can answer that, that would be great.
Would you like to wait for the, to open the public hearing?
Okay, okay, that's fine. So during the public hearing, if they could address if that's 5G equipment, that would be great. How big are the canisters approximately? Or maybe the applicant can address that as well, if you, if.
They can address that. The dimensions are on the, on the site, I mean, I'm sorry, on the elevations.
Okay.
I could probably address that. Give me one second here.
It looks to me the canisters are two feet in height?
That's correct. They're two feet in height on the Caia Real site.
Okay, thank you. Out of curiosity, do you know why the, the kind of, the placement is a different design? One's on top of the pole, it kind of just looks like an extension of the pole versus out on that arm? Do you know why they're different?
I'd probably let the applicant address that, but I believe it has to do with getting the proper coverage needed for those particular areas, while also complying with the Transportation Corridor height limit of the 35 feet.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then lastly, just to confirm, you said that the city cannot regulate these installations based on health concerns. Is that correct?
Based, as long as we receive a compliance certificate from the applicant that states that they are operating within the required FCC guidelines, we cannot correct.
And we received that certificate?
We did receive that certificate for both sites.
Thank you. So if the applicant could address those questions during the public hearing, thank you.
Couple of questions for you here, and they may not pertain to both, but, and I'll try to specify the specifics, but, so on the Caia Real, the pole is in a location where theoretically we'd have sidewalks? There's a street that doesn't have any sidewalks, is that correct?
The Caia Real does not have sidewalks in that location. I'm not sure about the rest of the street.
So I know that, I don't know about this neighborhood, but I live in the Landon District, and there's been discussions for years about underrounding. This looks like it's going on a power pole. If the neighborhood decided to underground, then what happens to this?
That's a good question. I believe that at that time, they would have to apply for another encroachment permit through the Public Works Department, and work with the, the applicant would have to work with the city to come up with a design that would, that would underground him properly.
But they would still be able to leave the tower? Would it just be a pole?
You know, I actually don't know the answer to that question. That's something that we could look into, for sure.
Next question, and most specifically on the Caia Real one, is why this pole as opposed to maybe an other pole that isn't a combo pole? You know, you're looking at the one on Molina, where they don't have a bunch of homes that are already, you know, it's cluttered already at this corner with, I think this thing feeds at least three homes. And the other one just has power going to the light pole, or going to the actual light? Is there, is there a process? And maybe you can help me understand, in this instance, you've got utility poles, one looks like a power pole, one looks like a streetlight. Is it basically, they can go on any power pole or streetlight in the city by just, you know, cutting an agreement with STGE, or how does this, how does this work?
Yeah, they first need to have an agreement with the utility company or the city if it's a city-owned pole. Most of the power poles out there are actually, I don't know for sure, but most of the poles out there are going to be owned by STGE but in city right-of-way. The particular location on Caia Real was chosen due to the fact that it had the height and the, and the location that provided coverage to fill that gap that was up there. And as far as that pole being cluttered or having too much on it, I think that's why they're proposing to replace the pole with one that's more structurally feasible to hold it, to hold the additional weight. But I would not be able to answer for STGE on, you know, why the agreement was chosen on this particular pole.
Okay, maybe they can address that when they do, when they come up and speak. Next question, so this is Verizon's, right? Not anybody else?
That's correct. These are both Verizon poles.
So what stops or doesn't stop, I guess, Sprint from coming in on the pole on the other side of the street, and AT&amp;T coming on the other catty corner, and is there any process for that? Is it co-location, anything like that?
I mean, you can co-locate on an existing pole under the FCC 6409 section, which allows for adding additional antenna arrays, so long as it doesn't increase the width or height, a certain, certain size. I don't know if it's off the top of my head, but, so the co-location is possible. If another carrier wanted to come in and install a pole across the street, whether it be a new pole, replace an existing, or mount on an existing, that would also require an antenna use permit. With small cell sites, within the right-of-way installation, our zoning code does not have like a distance requirement in between these types of poles. That's, that's for the, like, you know, freestanding installation only. So yeah, there's a potential that that could happen, but we would need to review it at a discretionary level.
Okay. And then on that note, just so I understand, this, these are considered small cell? So do they have to be on an existing utility pole, or could Verizon just get an encroachment permit from the city and erect a pole somewhere?
Yeah, they could get an encroachment permit from the city and erect a new pole somewhere. This particular right-of-way installation is different, obviously, because they're utilizing the existing ones that are owned by STGE, and whether or not, you know, if they were to build something in the right-of-way, the city-owned property, you know, I don't know if the city would approve that type of encroachment application.
Okay.
It depends.
So then one other question I have for you, and it's in one of our findings. So the finding that we have to make, number six, is that the public need for the use of the antenna facility has been documented. So what, is there a threshold of, you know, how that determination is made? I mean, we see coverage maps, there's color, it's color-coded, it's not good, it's good, it's maybe okay. Where's the threshold that says, yeah, this is a public need?
The public necessity is something that, that I think is determined by the applicant. You know, we receive the coverage maps, and, and we receive the, you know, the FCC compliance certificate, and make the judgment call based on that, that, that this is an area that's lacking coverage, and it's an area that potentially, you know, by installing these antennas, it would fill that gap. But we utilize the coverage maps and, and the other certifications, like I said, that are provided to us, to make the determination.
All right. I think that's it for my questions. Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
I guess my, I had the same question. It said the public need for the use of the antenna has been documented, and all I've seen in the package is, is the coverage map. Is that correct? Is that?
The coverage maps are what are provided to us, correct.
That's all. Thanks, Dani.
All right, Dani, I have one additional question. Because they're replacing both of these poles with new poles at both locations, is there going to be any disturbance to surrounding? I know at one location, Vice Chair Nelson said there was no sidewalk, but am I impacting any landscaping, anything else, and there's a condition to replace it and return it?
There is, and as part of the encroachment permit process, specifically with, I know the Camino El Molino site, which does have a landscape strip underneath it, that any landscaping that is to be disturbed has to be put back into place to, to the satisfaction of the city as part of that. The Camino El Molino pole is actually not being replaced, that one, they're utilizing the existing pole. The Caia Real one is the one where they're replacing the pole. But yes, through the encroachment permit process, anything that's disturbed will be returned back to the city's satisfaction.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will open it for public comment. So do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we have four requests to speak.
Okay, so just as a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please fill out a request form and get it to the secretary, and then all comments are all, thank you, all comments will be limited to a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes. So please be respective of your time limits when addressing the commission. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to the applicant to respond to our original Commissioner question. So if you could please state your name and your city of residence before you start. Thank you.
You hear me? My name is Mike Farrar. I'm with Verizon Wireless. I'm the municipal engagement, I cover municipal engagement for this area. I reside in Carlsbad. I want to try to go line by line here and just address the inquiries that were addressed by the Commission here. So I think we've addressed the dimension of the can, the can ten, I believe that, just want to confirm that that was to your satisfaction. I think that the actual dimensions, was that sufficiently?
Is it two feet accurate?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two, two feet in, in height by about a, roughly a one-foot radius.
One of the other items that was brought up was the difference in design configuration. So one of these, the Camino El Molino design is what we refer to as a top-mounted cylindrical radome. The other is a can antenna on a horizontal mast arm. The, the general reason for the difference in configuration is requiring, is complying with the Government Order 95. So GEO 95 mandates that we be, have a certain setback away from power lines. Specifically as it relates to Camino El Molino, I understand that there's a, that there's a small, is it secondary power?
Yes. My name is Bartos Sorio. I'm with Yukon Group, representing Verizon Wireless, and I reside in Woodland Hills. So.
You sound like the speaker. I can't.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So to answer your question regarding the different designs, Camino El Molino has a pole-top antenna because it was structurally feasible. Originally, or as existing right now, the, the pole has a secondary power line running to the top of the pole, which we will be able to underground and bring power to the facility. However, on Caia Real, because we do have existing secondary power and we have power going into residential homes, we weren't able to do a pole-top antenna because due to state standards and SDG and, SDG and E standards, we're not able to go above power lines on, with our facilities. So we have to stay under power lines, and we have to keep a certain separation. So we have to be, by California standards, we have to be at least six feet below power lines.
And if I may, underlying all of this is really driven by the radio frequency engineering design in order to achieve necessary requisite heights, what they refer to as RAD centers, in order for the site to address the significant gap in coverage and capacity in this area. So that's, that's the main justification for the difference in configuration. There was a question about 4G, 5G, that sort of thing. This, this is not, this, these sites are not part of our 5G polygon. They are operating at a frequency that only this, this particular antenna can only operate at that frequency. There's no, there's no other way for it to evolve or change at this juncture, but we certainly, it's, it's designed as 4G, as part of our, you know, current 4G offering, and that's effectively, in the event that any equipment on this particular, either one of these sites, would have to be changed, that would undoubtedly necessitate a revisit to this, this body to get such approval. So. And then in terms of the, the question that was, as it relates to why here and why in these locations, there is, we did provide the coverage, coverage maps, as you had noted. These are to address both coverage and capacity. The FCC outlines sort of a significant gap in coverage and capacity as the metrics by which these sites are cited effectively, in order to avoid an effective prohibition of service in these areas. So that is why we chose it. And I can allow my colleague to address why specifically this pole versus maybe the one across the street. That's, that's the discussion that he goes through with both SDG and E and RF engineers.
Yeah, so when, when going through existing vertical elements in, in the urban area and choosing, you know, which pole to co-locate on, we look at certain factors in different poles. So for Caia Real and both Camino El Molino, we did take a look at other poles in the surrounding area, and the poles that, that were there, we were able to disqualify because they were, they were overtaxed in, in existing power lines, fuse boxes, telecom lines that were already there. And so we just were not, we were not going to be able to get the separation that we would need between our facility, our antenna, our radios, and the existing power lines or fuse boxes. Also, other things we look at as well is any existing substructure that is underground, existing water lines, gas lines, things of that nature, other handholds that may be there from other utility companies or other carriers, because we do have to run our fiber underground, and we do have to place handholds underground. So we always have to make sure we have enough room in the right-of-way to place our substructure. But again, looking at the other poles in the surrounding area, some of those poles were already, you know, 40 to 50 feet in height, and for us to co-locate on them, we would have to replace them with taller poles, which means we would have to apply for a variance with a city to go above the 35-foot transit corridor zoning code.
And in closing, if I may, these, these sites operate at a, a very small fraction And in closing, if I may, these sites operate at a very small fraction of what is deemed permissible and safe by the FCC. It's something that we routinely certify. These are low-power, low-power facilities as opposed to larger macro sites that are somewhat larger, larger in terms of output. They, like I said, operate in, it's a very small fraction of what is deemed permissible. We've submitted the compliance paperwork in regard to that. They, you know, from an apples and oranges standpoint, macro versus small cells, you know, standing at the base of a macro site, you have the equivalent output of baby monitor in terms of electromagnetic emissions. And these facilities operate at a smaller fraction of that output, that threshold in power density. They're well-designed, we place them where we place them because of the need, in terms of significant gap in coverage and our capacity, and that is why we have located these and we've worked closely with staff in terms of the design. Thank you very much.
Did I answer all your questions? Okay, thank you. Right, I'd like to call to the podium David Plotnick.
Hi there, I don't have that much to say. I didn't have that much time to prepare. I do know that, I think there are some other cell phone towers. I heard of a 5G one that was supposed to go up at a church down the hill from us. I just, it seems like there are a lot of these going up. But the other thing I wanted to point out is that I live about 100 yards away from the Cali Real one. My phone's right there. Because of COVID, I've been working from home, I'm an insurance broker. I use this thing all day long, I have Verizon, it works like a charm. So I don't really need that.
All right, next to speak is Steve Hamilton. Okay. Wayne Collins?
I'll make it quick. I live about 60 feet from the El Molina, and we're about to spend quite a bit of money building a brand-new house over the existing house. So I'm a little bit concerned with the safety. I guess my question for, now I hear that it's not 5G. I did a lot of study on the 5G and it's what really scared me the most, but 4G doesn't seem to be as problematic. I guess the question I have is, will they be able to replace the 4G with a 5G at any point in time in the future and what do they have to go through? Yeah, and what's the schedule of that? By the way, I also have Verizon, I've had it for 15 years, there's absolutely zero problems. It's, I don't know why they need to add more towers, actually. And so just in closing, the reason I'm really concerned, it's a backstory. 25 years ago, I bought a new house on a housing tract in Orange. It was located under some high-powered transmission lines, electric transmission lines. And, you know, we moved there thinking the city has done their due diligence, it's safe. My wife contracted cancer after a few years. Three other women in their 30s contracted cancer, they all died. My son came down with Tourette's and two more boys on our street came down with Tourette's. So it's really up to the city to watch out for our health and safety. Obviously, the city of Orange did not. And I moved here after these events, came to Capital Beach 23 years ago, it's been like 23 years now, and I was hoping it would be safe. So I'm a little worried that if this does go from 4G to 5G, it could really impact us health-wise. Thank you.
All right, and the last speaker is Philip Duke.
Hi, my name is Philip Duke. I've lived here since 1964. I surfed here before the harbor went in, so I've been here quite a long time. My house is right underneath that antenna, 32 feet away from that antenna. 32 feet. Now, I don't care what they say, you know, it's an eyesore. One thing, you can look at that one antenna and see if that's two feet. That other one looks a lot more than two feet to me at El Molino. So I just wanted to say that. They say the height is 35 feet. Well, if they put a four or five-foot antenna on top of that, wouldn't that be encroaching on the 35-foot limit for Dana Point? That seems like it to me. The antenna, they have a large antenna right by the church by my house. It's 2.6 tenths of a mile from this site right here. It's a huge antenna, it's covered with tree stumps, they've already masked it and everything else. You can put an antenna right on the top of that. I just looked at it tonight, I just went by and saw it. So it's only 2.6 tenths of a mile away from that and where that site is. So I just wanted to bring that into view. I have a couple of pictures, I wanted to show you that pole that they're not going to replace. And my neighbor here has a deck, you can't see it from here, but his deck will be at the same height as that antenna. And if you do El Camino Real and to that antenna, his deck is right there, right facing it. I mean, he's right at the same height of those antennas. So that to me is a red flag right there. Let's see, what else? Oh, my property value, I'm just worried about my health. I don't care about my property value, I'm never going to sell it. You know, I've lived here since 64. Now, I have a picture, I just wanted to show you. Here's the, here's the antenna, here's the real picture. Look at that pole. Look at how crooked that pole is.
I mean, my one on the east side is crooked.
Yeah, Larry's, he's right across the street. That pole is, if you put weight on it, I think you're going to fall. So just so you know, that's the true picture of the pole. I just took it the other day. So, let's see, one minute left. Yeah, now that pole, when I judge it, it looks like it's about a 15%, angle from the 180 it should be, just so you know. So I told you I've been a resident here since 64, I used to surf at Boneyard. So I've had houses here since, I bought my first house, I rented, and then I bought my first house in 72. And I've lived up in the Palisades that whole time. And I, my, I have a cell phone and I have Verizon. And it's, I've never had a problem with it. Friends of mine have had AT&amp;T, yeah, they've had problems, but I've never had a signal. And I look at my bar, I get four bars in my house, inside the house. So I don't think there's a problem with, you know, that. And all the neighbors, they have Verizon and they don't have a prob, I've never had a problem with my cell phone. So that's what I don't understand. And I just, I'm scared, oh, I'm just scared if they go to E4 and put a four in, that they'll put a five in next, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have more speakers now. If you want to speak, please fill out a request to speak. Okay, Joyce Plotnick, please.
Okay, I don't have a lot to add, but there are already two giant cell phone towers in our neighborhood, one on the hill and one down by the park. And from what I understand, they're proposing another 5G in the park. I saw it, I sent him, Danny, an email about it, and he told me he would tell me when there was a meeting about it. I have the pictures of them surveying it and I think that, I don't know if it's because we don't have an HOA, but how much are you going to radiate us? I know they say, you know, it's minimal, it's baby monitor, but you know what? If it's baby monitor, why don't you put all these cell phone towers in your neighborhood and you tell us how you feel in 10 years? You know, I do, I have the time to find out how everybody's doing, I have the time and the energy, and I will go door-to-door and find out how their health is every month and I will come to you Verizon and you to the city. I think this is terribly unfair. I mean, in my opinion, it's our health. I feel like we're going to get fried with all these cell phone towers. That's where I'm coming from, that's all I have to say. But I think for, well, now with these other two, you know, we've got the big two, then the 5G going in at the park as well. From what I understand, it's because the church, that's how they make money. I talked to someone at the city who told me that. Anyways, that's all I really have to say, other than please, please consider our health. That's all I want to say.
Brenda?
It's at the pleasure of the chair. I would just urge you that, if you allow him to speak, you allow others to speak.
If we can get through the rest of the speakers, please, thank you. John and I apologize, is it Harms? Harris, I apologize.
So my deck is the one that's literally 100 feet from the El Molino tower. And I'm literally right in the middle of both towers, if you go as a bird flies. And my neighbor Phil here, that pole is in his front yard. Literally, that is, that is his front yard. And I've had Verizon, I've owned that home on El Molino for six years. I've had Verizon since the day I arrived, and I get four bars. No problem. And I have no problem with my Verizon service. Verizon has always treated me well, my whole family. I just absolutely do not see the need for more radiation in our neighborhood. I just don't see the need. Thank you.
All right, Steve Dixon?
Hi there. I live at 27095 Cali Real, which is the property where you can see the River Rock Wall there. Awfully close to our residence. It's a little bit scary. And I know we're not supposed to talk about health issues, but I don't think they, the feds have checked into health issues since 95. So that's not good. To me, that's like, how can you possibly say health is not a concern here? Seems, seems a little suspicious. My neighbors, the Hamiltons, have two young children. Here I go on the health thing, and I apologize. But I watched a British military colonel who did a study on microwave warfare because it was used quite a bit. And his big thing was stick with cable technology because the effects that microwave warfare has on young girls is it destroys the reproductive eggs. And to me, it's like, what are we doing? It's a, it's a big risk to take for the children of our future. It just really, really concerns me. I'm, of course, worried about, it's so close to the property, what about property value? I know that's maybe not a big concern to a lot of you, but I'm concerned about it. If I decide to sell my property and then somebody comes and looks at it and goes, "Oh my gosh, there's a 4G tower." Or if they get the approval to go 5G, then what? I don't know if it matters, but I think it's an historical trail. It hasn't been added to the historical, it hasn't been recognized as historical, but Mr. Dohini planted about six to eight tory pines that ran along behind the Hamiltons property and ran through my property and on down. And it was, he planted them for his wife when she was out riding horses so that if she got hot, too hot out there that she could stop and get some shade before she came down back home. And then I go, "Well, the only other thing I can come up with here is what about the Pacific Pocket Mouse?" Oh, I tapped out, didn't I? They're making a comeback and they, this might not help.
Apologize, was it Mr. Duke that wanted to speak more?
Yes, I just wanted to say one other thing. When I was here at the last meeting, they pulled, they pulled it out because they didn't want to do it or whatever. There was three antennas on the list, if I remember rightly. There was one on 23451 Caribbean Drive. Now, that's not on the list now, though that happens to be in Monarch Bay. So why is that? You know what I mean? It just kind of fishy to me. That was the third one on the antenna, now it's not on the list. So, you know, I'm just curious about that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have one final speaker, two more? Do you just, would you just like to read the name to get it going? Derek Ketchum?
Good evening. I just live right next door to Phil, and I agree with my neighbors here, trying to understand the rationale. I've been a Verizon customer for 12 years. My whole family, adult children, Verizon customers. I don't understand the rationale when we're getting at least four bars, no issues, to plant a pole right in somebody's yard? Why do you choose a spot right in a residential area when you know there are possible risk factors? I just don't understand that. That's irrational to me. You know, I for one, if Verizon's going to insist and push it through, then I'll just speak for myself, I don't know anybody else, but I'm done with Verizon.
All right, Nicole Hamilton, please.
Hi, my name's Nicole Hamilton. I first and foremost want to thank everybody for your grace. My youngster is getting a little antsy for dinner, so I apologize for that. I live right across the street at 34436 Camino El Molino, right across from Cali Real. And I have a lot of concerns, I don't want to harp on some of the stuff that everybody has already spoke on. But number one, I don't understand why they have to put in a new pole and it has to be higher than the one that we already have there now. The one we already have there now is not ideal, but at least it's shorter. I have a beautiful ocean view from my home and I do care about my property value. I bought here in 2012, fell in love with the city and still love it. And I want my neighborhood to look like some of the more affluent neighborhoods in our community. And I think we're on the right track to that. My neighbors are awesome, that's, you can see the support that showed up here tonight. We take care of our homes and we want to, we have pride in, you know, maybe we don't live in Monarch Beach, but we have the same pride for our neighborhood. And we don't want to see the beauty of it degraded by things like this. And I care very deeply about the aesthetics of the property and what that's going to do to the value of our homes, our ocean views off our balconies and our decks. I have a rooftop deck as well as a balcony off my master. And this new tower that's going up higher by an additional 10 feet, I believe, that absolutely is going to bring down my property value. That degrades the view that I see, the beautiful ocean we all are so fortunate to get to live by. In addition to that, I, you know, I'm an outside sales rep, I have no idea, I've got maybe five days' notice to say anything here, so I have no idea on the health risks. But I can say that both my husband and I are working professionals and we've been working from home since March. We both have Verizon for work, we have absolutely no issues. We also were not provided what you guys were provided of this, so to speak, subjective coverage issue that they're claiming is in existence. It seems to me that everyone that's spoken today opposing this has Verizon, so we're all loyal customers, number one, and number two, we don't have any issues. So I'm just really confused. I think the health is a concern, there's no issue with our coverage, and thirdly, it absolutely is going to hurt our property value. And anybody that tells you otherwise is lying. Woodland Hills and Carlsbad, those are beautiful, nice areas. I challenge that you're making the same argument for these things to go up in your neighborhoods. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for commissioner comments. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for Commissioner comments. Anybody want to volunteer to start? Okay, Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. And thank you to the residents for their comments and their passion in coming out. I have a few questions based on questions that they raised. So Danny, I'll direct them to you, but if you feel they'd be better answered by the applicant, then maybe you could do that. One of the issues is what about their ability to switch to 5G in the future? The other one has to do with the addition of the pole top antenna. Will that exceed the height, the max height, to the top of the canister? I'm interested in the percent difference. They talked about kind of a small site versus, I think they said a power site or a macro site, what I'm assuming is a monopole. I'd be curious to know what kind of the difference in output is, as a percentage, of the small one versus, let's say, a monopole. And then also, if that pole is significantly crooked, if it needs to be replaced. So those are the questions that were raised that I would love to hear answers to.
Well, I can answer the question in regards to the pole height of Camino El Molino site. The total height with the canister, to the top of the canister, will be within 35 feet. Yeah, so, and we've conditioned it so that there's a height certification involved with that, that if and when it is installed, prior to finaling out this project, we certify that the height is less than 35 feet within the TC zone. Now, as far as the other questions, whether or not you can upgrade the service from 4G to 5G, you know, with retrofitting or however it's done, I'm unable to answer that question, but what I can tell you is once the antenna is installed and there's an upgrading of equipment, FCC Order 6409 allows for upgrading on co-location of equipment, which could effectively make it to where, because this is, given the location, that they could potentially upgrade the equipment without a discretionary review. Now, as far as if the pole is crooked, that is not something I could answer. You know, we're going to review our building department. We'll review the structural designs and make sure that it is feasible. If not, then, you know, maybe it is something that needs to be done, but that's not something I can answer either. So I'd like to address those questions to the applicant.
Mike Farrar, again, on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Relative to the inquiry concerning the changing of equipment, so just to kind of level set, I think what folks are, or the question that is being asked is, can this facility become ultra-wideband, the millimeter wave? It's not designed as such, so the equipment produces on, you know, throws the frequency that it throws. It can't be modified remotely in terms of the actual frequency. It does not, in order for, millimeter wave cannot be shrouded. All of these are in, within a shroud. There can be no physical barrier between a millimeter wave antenna and the end user. Just doesn't work. So it's not something that we could, that could be done remotely. It would require a design change in order to replace the equipment that would be within these antennas to a millimeter wave type piece of equipment. That's not what this is envisioned to do.
Okay, thank you. Did you have an answer about the, kind of the perceived radiation output or whatever the measurement would be of this site versus, let's say, a monopole?
Thank you for reminding me. I would be speculating if I gave you an actual quantified figure. I don't, I'm not an RF engineer. It's certainly a much slower power output. These, without, I can't, I don't know the specs on the actual kilowatt output on these things, but they're, I mean, it's a, I don't know, a small fraction of what would be on a macro facility. It's really, they work differently. Ultimately, the macro facility, while we've heard a lot of discussion about having enough bars on someone's cellphone, it's really, these facilities are located closer to the end users to provide additional offloading, some of the traffic that's on the existing macro infrastructure. It's really, it's just a physics play, trying to get closer, shorten the gap, provide data more quickly, cut down on that return, that turnaround time. It's, that's how these sites actually function. In terms of what we may see today, that may dramatically diminish in the short term by virtue of the fact that we continue to have more and more demand on our existing infrastructure. So you may have five bars because the actual frequency is getting there, but it's like a highway. You may have five lanes, but no one's moving because everyone's on the highway. That's really the reason why we need these facilities and why we place them where they're placed.
I guess, does anybody else have any questions before I give my comments or thoughts?
I didn't quite understand whether or not that you would be required to come back for a change if you went from 4G to 5G?
That's correct. So what I was referring to is our 5G is currently, we deploy on what we call a millimeter wave. It's higher on the spectrum, the radio frequency spectrum. Those, that type of equipment is not something that would function within the radoms that are currently proposed before this body. It just wouldn't function.
I understand that, but my question is, if you decided that you needed to go to 5G, would you be able to do that without coming back to this commission?
Well, it would necessitate a design change. In other words, these radoms would not function with that type of deployment. So unless we would be permitted to willy-nilly change out designs, which I suspect is not the case, it would have, it would require cutaways, it would require a whole new design. So I suspect that we would absolutely have to come back here.
I heard your question, I mean, I heard your answer, but my question is, it's not whether or not the existing unit would be modifiable to 5G. My question is, if you wanted to go to 5G, would you have to come back and get a different approval?
I would defer to staff on that, but ultimately, that's my understanding.
Apologize, if you could please, it's time for us to have our comments right now, the commissioners, not for additional, you had your time for public comment. So I would be appreciative if you guys could please respect us and our time for discussion.
So there are certain thresholds that require the applicant to come back for a re-review or discretionary, a new discretionary application. Just changing the equipment itself, I think, is what Roy is asking, going from a 4G to a 5G technology. The technology itself is not something that we would review and take to a discretionary review level. What it does, what is, is an overall design or location change. We have specific design and location criteria. If the overall design of it changed drastically and we're not able to, doesn't meet the, doesn't meet how this was originally approved, then yeah, most certainly, they would need to come back for a discretionary review. Now, if they're simply just upgrading the equipment from, let's say, from 3G to 4G, I know this is 4G, but, you know, if, I don't know if that constitutes a change in the design. If it does, then we look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Commissioner Roy, I can answer your question. It's a yes. We would have to get approval from city planning for a design change, and we would have to get approval from Public Works for any structural changes or any changes in substructure. And we would also have to get approval from SDGNE for design, because we are leasing the pole. So we would have to get three approvals to make any type of changes.
Okay, so going back then to, unless you have questions? No? Okay.
Thank you. I'm not a telecom engineer, but I doubt that Verizon is doing this just to spend money, what undoubtedly is going to be a lot of money, when they don't need to, or when they don't perceive that they need to. So my assumption is that they perceive the need to do that, to continue to provide the good service that they do. And based on what I heard from staff, is that per FCC regulations, we're not allowed to consider the health aspects of it. We have to assume that the federal government is doing that, and that's how they regulate the wireless technology that we all use. Our job as planning commissioners is to evaluate proposals that come before us, and we have to follow the rules and the laws on the books and the zoning codes and so forth to say, does it match, does it meet all these things, does it fall within the box? That's our job. Doesn't mean that we like it or not, that we want it or not, but if it falls within the box, then our task is to say yes. Even if it's unpopular, actually. So, given all that, I find that this does fall within the box, that they've done their homework, that they've been doing everything the way that they should and are supposed to. And I can only assume that there's a need, otherwise I can't imagine that they would want to be out doing it. So I'll be supportive of the project.
Commissioner Donner?
Under the Section 907020, Number 5A shall be designed to be unobtrusive. J, avoid being visually dominant. And F, public need for the use of the antenna has been documented. I guess Verizon has got a lot of satisfied customers here. And so the public need for the antenna has not been documented to my satisfaction. From the Verizon standpoint, I understand that the coverage would be improved, but I don't see any documentation for that. And the proposed antenna would not create any significant blockage to public view, and the proposed antenna would be aesthetically integrated into its surrounding environment. So for those reasons, I'm not supportive of the proposal.
Vice Chair Nelson?
Appreciate all the comments from the community. You know, these are not easy issues, and I think Commissioner McCann touched a little bit on the issues that were raised tonight that are outside of our review, which is unfortunate, but it is the reality of the system that we're in. And, you know, there are many things that are regulated by the state that I don't agree with, and certainly by the federal government. This is one of them. But setting aside the health issues, I do, you know, I have comments really on both towers. So I'm going to talk specifically on the Cai Real first. And my biggest challenge with this tower on this, at this location is that we're actually increasing the amount of equipment on a power pole that, you know, historically, cities, neighborhoods are doing everything they can to underground these facilities, not add to them. I don't know, I don't think you can add to a power pole with another crossbar that's below the high voltage, because you've got your separation there, that is going to be, you know, integrated with the crossbar. So the current design on Cai Real does not do that. It doesn't, I don't think we can make the, I certainly can't make the argument that this fits, that this is aesthetically integrated into the surrounding environment. And, you know, and maybe that's because these don't belong on power poles. You know, I think on the top of light poles, when I get to my Molina discussion, is a whole different item. But this current location, the current proposed design, doesn't integrate at all. It actually just adds to a pole that doesn't have a crossbar, adds another, you know, two-foot canister on it that doesn't, you know, this doesn't have any, I just can't see how that argument's been met. The, you know, the need is an interesting one, and I struggle with this idea that it's obtuse, that the public need is sort of, varies based on applicant and, you know, the reports that they submit, but we don't have any measure. So I don't know how we, as a commission, make a determination that the public need is met when we don't even have a standard that we can look, we can point to. But I think, starting off, again, with this specific one on Cai Real, I'm concerned about the design. And so, you know, I'd offer up to the applicant either a denial on that one or an opportunity to delay and have you guys look at the design, because the current design doesn't, you know, function in my mind aesthetically at all. And it's certainly not an enhancement. You know, I think the other idea that it adds, the enhancement on these is only the additional communication capabilities is only for Verizon customers, not for the community. And it sounds like there's a lot of them here, but I question that one. As we get to the Molina one, you know, that one, I don't have as many issues with. I, you know, we, when looking at these drawings, it looks like they're adding about a foot, a foot and what, six inches to that pole, Danny? So it's not a substantial increase in height. And, you know, we don't have view protection here, unfortunately. For those who may see this now that don't already see it. But I don't have a concern with a pole top location, because it doesn't add anything material. It's a little bit more of a bulbous end. And since we can't really deal with height or health issues, we certainly can make sure these are designed right and designed in a manner that most people don't even notice them. So that's sort of where I sit tonight on this issue. I'm open for a discussion with all of you about how we move this forward or have them come back with more information. But I am concerned about the use of power poles for cell sites and the idea that this could, if you look at the maps, you know, this doesn't add a tremendous amount of coverage. And so how many power poles are we going to end up upgrading to be these cell sites? As opposed to the monopoles, or not monopoles, but the single, you know, pole top units? So at least they're not, you know, adding more visual light to the neighborhood.
I don't have a significant amount to add in addition to my fellow commissioners. One of the things that Vice Chair Nelson did touch on was coverage versus capacity. So the coverage doesn't show a big difference, but the capacity hasn't been demonstrated to us at all. So there is a concern there about the public need that it's been documented. Another comment, I agree with him on the El Molino pole, that it's just adding the height, it's not really changing significantly. The Cai Real, which has demonstrated that it's already leaning, may not even be structurally sound to support the arm that's there. And I concur that the issue that it's not aesthetically integrated into the surrounding environment and that, again, with the capacity versus coverage, that the public need hasn't truly been documented yet. So with that, do I have any motions?
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come back and address a couple of the comments, if you don't mind?
That's fine. So I will reopen the public hearing at this time?
So the question I guess I have is, as it relates to the Cai Real pole and the addition of a five-foot or a 10-foot crossbar in that canister, what are the other options?
I believe that's a six-foot, if I'm not mistaken. So it's a six-foot crossbar that is cantilevered on one side or the other. And it's effectively necessitated by virtue of the required setback from existing power lines. Generally speaking, I mean, that's typical, the typical configuration on SDGNE poles. That's the design that they approved for this particular site. And it's like an exhaustive sort of six-to-nine month review from SDGNE to say, hey, this is what we have determined is the appropriate configuration for that, for safety reasons.
Got it. So the question was, is there other designs? Not how hard is it to get another design approved? Not what process you have to go to do the approval, but is there other options? Not what process you have to go to do the, the approval, but is there other options?
You know, from a, from an RF standpoint, this, this particular Rad Center is, is where it is, by virtue of the fact that that's, that's the RF need that's being achieved by, at that, at that height. And that, that's the configuration that they, they elected for, to achieve that specific coverage and capacity objective, RF-wise. I can defer to my colleague as well in terms of more technical design or...
Yeah, I mean, for that particular pole, that is the, the design that best fits from a structurally feasible standpoint. You know, as we mentioned earlier, we cannot go, we cannot place the antenna on top of the pole, because we do have secondary power coming to the pole, and we have power lines running into residential homes. So we have to keep it below the, the power lines.
Okay, so I'll take that as a no, there are no alternative designs for that pole. Thank you.
For that, for that particular pole, no, not at this, yeah.
All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and take it back to the commission for motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and it's...
No, I was just curious, Vice Chair, if, because you sounded, you know, less opposed to the pole top location. If you were open to conceivably approving one, but not the other?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion that bifurcated the two applications.
Okay.
Or at least I'll speak to the, both items, and then we could figure out how to actually move that into an actual motion.
Okay, I'll stop holding things up then.
So my motion would be that we deny the request for the tower on Caire Real as submitted, and approve the one in El Molino with a condition that requires, that's very specific, that any change to the design, pre-construction or post-construction, anything, they have to bring it back in front of us for approval. That was the only condition I wanted to make sure was on there, is that, that it's clear. It sounds like it's not clear, so I want to make it crystal clear, there's no changes to that pole that are allowed, and, and this will come back here. And so that would be my motion. So it'd be really a denial for the first one, and approval on the second with that can, added condition.
I'll second that.
So I just want to confirm that we can do this as a single motion, and we do not need to break it into two.
That's correct. There's two separate resolutions, so we can certainly have those, that motion forwarded.
All right, then we can move forward with a vote.
Did we get a second? Sorry. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that, okay.
All right, with that approval, it would approve the use permit request for the pole located at 29, 27093 CS Caire Real, but deny the location at 34113 CS Camino El Molino.
For a point of clarification, I wanted to make sure, because, because Commissioner Donner was a no, but I think it's a yes on the first and a no on the second. Is that correct? So, the first, I, the first tower on Caire Real, what, the motion was to deny it? The second was to approve, but you voted no for both, this way. So you want it the other way?
I think he's opposed to both.
Got it. So, just want to make sure that we clarified that vote.
Okay, are we good?
So the motion is to deny the location on Cali Real, and to approve the location on Camino El Molino. So for any commissioners that do not support this particular motion, you would vote to, to oppose.
And that's with the specific condition that Eric added about no revisions without coming back to this body.
The addition of that condition, as well as the fact that we will be developing a resolution of denial based upon the statements that the commissioners made tonight related to the fact that the application is not consistent with the integration of the area, as well as the design concerns.
And demonstrating the public need.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to our next item. All right, the next item is a coastal, coastal development permit, CDP 20-0014, to permit a lot line adjustment to relocate the side yard property line between 32551 and 32561 Azores Road. And is there a staff report this evening?
Yes, Associate Planner Dana Giametti providing a staff report.
Thanks again, Chair Opal, fellow commissioners. So the project before you this evening is a request to permit a lot line adjustment to relocate a shared side yard property line between two parcels, while maintaining their zoning district's minimum size, width, and depth standards. So these parcels are located up in the Monarch Bay Terrace area, northeast of the intersection of Crown Valley Parkway and Pacific Coast Highway. They're located within the RSF4 zoning district, as well as within the coastal, coastal zone. Each lot contains an existing, recently renovated home. There's some hardscaping, landscaping, and both properties are owned by the applicant. Both parcels conform to the RSF4 minimum lot standards, which includes your lot width, your depth, and the size. With the exception of the substandard rear yard setbacks, the existing structures meet all other RSF4 setbacks. As you can see on this picture on the right, parcel, parcel two sits at a pad elevation that's higher than parcel one. You can see there's some topography in between here. Parcel two is higher than parcel one. So the applicant's primary residence is parcel two, so one at the top of the screen here, and he's using parcel one as a development investment. The existing shared side yard property line, which is shown in red in this image, is located 19 and a half feet from the home on parcel one, and located 10 feet from the home on parcel two. So those are the existing side yard setbacks. The applicant's requesting a lot line adjustment to relocate the shared side yard property line between parcel one and parcel two. Lot line adjustments are typically a ministerial action, but because both of these lots are located within the coastal zone, or the coastal development, a coastal development permit is required prior to processing the application for the lot line adjustment. So, parcel two, as I said earlier, it sits at a higher elevation than parcel one, as you can see, this is a pretty telling image here. The applicant requests to relocate that shared property line between the parcels 12.79 feet from, or feet to the south, towards the bottom of the side yard slope. So as you can see in this image, this yellow arrow indicates the, where the property line will be moving to. So it's currently up here at the top of the slope, and they are moving it 12.79 feet to the bottom of the slope here. The adjustment results in an updated side yard setback on parcel one and two of 6 feet 7 inches and 24 feet 3 inches, and those are shown in white here. As you can see, this results in this setback here, and then the setback on parcel two up here. The lot line adjustment, the lot line adjustment maintains two conforming parcels relative to lot size, width, and depth, and compliant RSF4 side yard setbacks. The applicant's ultimate goal is to increase the square footage of his personal property and maintain control of future landscaping on this slope. And there's no changes proposed to the existing structures on the site. So this is the table that shows compliance with the RSF4 minimum lot standards. As you can see here, you have your existing, and then your proposed on the right. So this is parcel one and two. This is showing conformance not only with the lot size and the lot width and lot depth for those zones, but also the side yard setbacks, and the front yard setbacks are also maintained. The rear yard setback, prior to the lot line adjustment, was non-conforming, and this is being maintained as non-conforming. There's absolutely no change there. So, that is the only non-conformity. So with that, staff finds that the proposed project's consistent with the policies and provisions of the City of Dana Point General Plan, the zoning code, and the local coastal program, and the resulting lot configure, configurations meet the RSF4 minimum development standards and preserve the required minimum side yard setbacks to the structures on each lot. Since the justification can be made for supporting the requested discretionary action, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the attached draft resolution approving CDP 20-0014, subject to the findings and conditions of the approval contained therein. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thanks.
All right, is any of the commissioners, okay, Vice Chair Nelson?
Oh, my mic's bound the whole time? All right. Quick question for you. Do we have any FAR lot coverage ratios that we need to confirm?
In residential zones, there are no FAR requirements. There is a lot coverage requirement, and these are also meeting the lot coverage requirements.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
The, the, the construction looks like it's pretty new. Did, did we approve the 2.6, of, the two-foot, six-inch setback at the rear of the property for the parcel one?
The parcel one was a remodel. The existing, the existing structure location did not change as part of that. So, prior, prior to this lot line adjustment, and then prior to the, the remodel, that structure was in that location.
Okay, thank you. The, on the, the attached map that shows before and after the site plan, what I was looking at, the standard development, last page, it shows the parcel 12,546 square feet on parcel two, and parcel one, 10,102. I couldn't see a difference before and after.
So, if you look at the, the table that I provided here, the minimum lot size, obviously, is the 8,700 square feet. To confirm, yeah, parcel one existing was 11,361 square feet. Parcel two is 11,004 square feet. After the adjustment, it results in parcel one being the 10,102 square feet, and parcel two ends up being larger, effectively 12,546 square feet.
Okay, I see it now. All right? So the side yard setback before is 19.5, and then it goes to 6.7?
That's correct.
And, and then the, on parcel two, it goes from 10 feet to 24.3, correct?
Correct.
And the year, the, the year, the rear yard setbacks remain the same at 2.6 and 10, 10.2, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner McCann? I have no questions, so with that, I will open it for a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
No, Chair Opal.
All right, I will close the public hearing and call it back for commissioner comments. Vice Chair Nelson?
Yeah, I don't have any issue, I'm an issue with this, I think it makes total sense. I'm assuming, based on this and the staff report, that this has got view control written all over it, so that nobody can put a big tree in the view of the southwest, so I would do the exact same thing if I own both properties, and I'm in full support of it tonight.
Commissioner Donner?
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with this proposal. I'm supportive, thank you.
I have no problem, I'm supportive. In fact, if it was mine, and I was concerned about that, I'd put a deed restriction over the rest of the site to, you know, control your view. But I'm supportive.
I have no additional comments to those already heard, so I will open it for a motion.
I will, I move that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 200014, to permit a lot line adjustment to, to relocate a side yard property line between 32551 and 32561 Azoro Road.
Second?
I'll make a second.
All right, if you can vote on that? Okay, that moves for approval. Thank you very much. So with that, moving on to old business, we have no old business this evening. We have no new business this evening. Do we have any staff reports?
Yes, good evening. The plan commission's been tasked by the city council to start looking at short-term rentals. Specifically, we're looking at developing a pilot program to offer short-term rental types throughout the community. And so staff is going to be bringing the first of a series of discussions to the plan commission at your next meeting, September 28th. We, we see this as, as basically the first opportunity for the plan commission to dive into this subject, and we'll be presenting some general concepts of what staff sees the pilot program containing, as well as some enforcement mechanisms that we would like to see in our current program, as well as the pilot program. So that'll be on September 28th. And I mentioned this is the first of probably three meetings. The first being kind of an introduction, the second, hopefully, developing the pilot program concept, and then the third, coming back with the pilot program itself. It does require approval of a coastal development permit. So it is potentially appealable to the city council, and then also by the coastal commission itself. So that will, is planned for your next meeting.
One quick question for you. If we have a vacation rental next door, across the street, does that create any issue with conflict?
I would ask our city attorney office to address that. I don't believe it does. Jennifer, do you want to get back to Chair Nelson on that?
Yeah, if I could get back to, I'll probably get back to you.
Sure, I'll give you a call.
All right, thank you.
I was just going to ask, who's heading up this from the staff?
It's myself and John Champa, with also input from Jeff Rosler, our code enforcement supervisor. So, team of us, and also, obviously, the city attorney's office.
Right, are there any commissioner comments this evening? All right, with that, we will close the meeting until September 28th.